The Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure, Maritime Transportation calls this public hearing to order. It is now four oh one PM on Wednesday, July twenty-third, two thousand fourteen. I'm sure possibly other senators will be coming, or maybe they're in their office watching, watching the, this public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on the executive appointment of Ms. Mary Ann Bizarro to serve as a general member representative to the Guam Contractors License Board to hear Bill three-two-five dash three-two introduced by the late V.C. Penylinen. It's an act to add Section seventy-nine, one oh eight to the Guam Code annotated relative to publishing consumer complaints, and to have a public hearing on Bill three-two-six dash three-two also introduced by the late Senator V.C. Penylinen. It's an act to amend Section eight-five-oh-two, Chapter eight, Title twelve Guam Code annotated relative to increasing the cap on customer generator power services entrance capacity for non-residential class customers. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on July fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, meeting the five-day notice requirement, and on July eighteenth, meeting the forty-eight-hour notice requirement, thus the meeting, meeting the requirements of the open government law. This public hearing is also being broadcast on local television, GTA, and it's been televised, so please speak clearly into the microphone. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until five PM on Friday, August first, two thousand fourteen. Please address testimonies to Senator Thomas Ciata, Chairperson, Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure, Maritime Transportation. And want to thank Vice Speaker VJ Cruz for joining us today. We're gonna go ahead and go right into the public hearing. We will now receive, if there's anybody who has signed up to provide testimony for Ms. Bizarro's appointment to the Guam License Board, please step forward. I have, right, Mr. Rigel, are you going to provide testimony? Okay. We'll have you give testimony, and then, Ms. Bizarro, why don't you go ahead and step forward, since there's nobody else who has signed up, and then we'll just go right into you. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, senators. My name's Riley Rigel. I'm newly elected Chair of the Guam Contractors License Board. And I came here today to support her nomination to be on the board. Right now, we have five members, three of whom, or two of whom are ex officio. And we really need a full complement on the board, or at least get close to it. If she gets confirmed, that would be six, we'll have a total of six members. And she's been on the board for, since before I got on the board, so it's been, it's been a while. She's very easy to work with, and very diligent in looking over the application forms and stuff, and knows what, has certain things that she looks for when she does that. And I've, and she's also helped us make our quorums that last year, when we were having trouble with that. She was always able to show up. So I would really support her continuation on the board to be reconfirmed for another term. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few, I have a few questions of you. This is a six-member board?
It's a seven-member board. I was just looking at the law the other day. Two are ex officio, and five are appointed by the governor.
And do the ex officio members count towards the, when present, do they count towards a quorum?
Yes. If they, if they didn't, we wouldn't have had a meeting for the last two or three years.
Now, you, you made us, you stated that last year, Ms. Bizarro would, would come in and would help you to then achieve a quorum. I'm just kinda puzzled by that, because according to the records, you started serving for the board in two thousand three initially, to two thousand six, and then you got reappointed for a four-year term after that, from two thousand six to two thousand ten. But I do not have any records. Were you then reappointed? Because the last record I have is that the last appointment, yeah, the confirmation was two thousand six to two thousand ten, and then just now being reappointed again.
If I could speak to that, one of the things that, when I came new to the board, whenever I got on, I just went with the flow, whatever. But there apparently was a lack of accounting in terms of when the board members started and when their term was over, because a lot of the board members surpassed their expired terms and continued to serve. And there was, there was no good accounting of that, okay? And so one of the things that I want to do is to try to figure out who all the various board members are, when their term starts, when their terms expired, so that we don't have this thing where people keep on like everything's normal, even though officially their term's over. So that, that was a problem. And it wasn't just her, it was also with two other board members that had, whose terms had expired, but they kept on attending meetings.
Yeah, and, I mean, I, I applaud you for showing up. I'm just, we just need to, I guess we just need to kinda reconcile this thing about you coming in like as late as, as recent as last year. But I know that the last, two thousand six to two thousand ten, the last public hearing, or confirmation hearing that I did on you was of two thousand nine. We're gonna have to go back and reconcile that, there was... So I'll have to get my staff on that. But other than that, so, so your understanding then is that really Ms. Bizarro has been a member of the Contractors License Board since two thousand three up to the current date?
No, she ran out of her overage, almost like the soccer games, right? The overage time, she ran, ran that out, I believe. That's why we're, she's back here for reconfirmation.
All right, we'll reconcile that and, and just make sure that, and the concern that I have with that is the implications of the validity of actions that may have been taken if the board, if in fact the quorum was made by the presence of Ms. Bizarro, and, and you know, her having voted during a period, if in fact she was not in a duly confirmed status. But, but we'll, we'll, we'll straighten that out. Right now, our objective here is to hear Ms. Bizarro on your confirmation. So I don't, Vice Speaker, unless you have any questions. Otherwise, Mr. Rigel, you can go ahead and take your seat.
Thank you.
But before we start with you, Ms. Bizarro, I just want to say that the last public hearing that I conducted for your confirmation was on June twenty-third, two thousand nine. So if that was for a four-year term, that would have taken you up to June twenty-third, two thousand thirteen. Okay, so I gotta get my own reconciling here. But I just want to note that in that committee report that was, that was written on your last confirmation hearing, you had served then, prior to that appointment, as a vice chairman. The executive director for the License Board at the time was now Senator Tom Morrison. And basically, the comments that he had about you was that you are a significant asset to the board. You are well versed in the mandates of the board. You have helped to streamline the licensing process significantly, and takes the lead in resolving cases and hearings. So is there anything that you want to continue accomplishing in this next four years? It seems like you've accomplished quite a bit here.
Thank you, Senator. I think at this time, my desire to continue as, as a member is just to provide the support that is needed for the agency. They have not been able to have a quorum for the past year, and so now it's just to get the agency back on track. And so I would like to continue to serve in that capacity.
Now, in the current job that you have, does that take you off island quite a bit?
Oh, no, not at all.
Not at all, okay. Okay, so, so if you get confirmed, then that would give you three, seven, basically, by the time you finish this term, it'd be about eleven years then that you've been on. I think that's how it counts.
Yes, sir. It, it has gone by quickly, yes.
Yeah.
And the agency has improved, which is a good thing.
Okay, good. Vice Speaker?
I just want to thank you for serving, especially since your time has lapsed and going for an additional term. But, and with Senator Morrison's recommendation for the last time, that seems quite laudatory. So this, I have no questions, just to thank you for your service.
Thank you, Senator.
I don't have any other, unless, unless there's some statements that you would like to make?
No, not at this time, sir.
Okay, all right. Well, this is your second go-around, and so I think you've been in the neighborhood before, and at least I know, I know you well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and the confirmation hearing of Ms. Mary Ann Bizarro to the Guam Contractors License Board has just hereby concluded. We're gonna go ahead and we'll proceed to Bill three, thank you very much. We're gonna proceed to Bill three-two-five. It's an act to add Section seventy-nine, one oh eight, Chapter seventy-nine, Title twelve Guam Code annotated relative to publishing consumer complaints. And with that, Mr. Joaquin Flores, the GM, you're providing written testimony, and Simon Sanchez, oral testimony, so...
Thank you, Senator. My name is Joaquin Flores, the General Manager for the Guam Power Authority, excuse me. And we've provided written testimony for, for Bill three-twenty-six dash thirty-two.
We're, we're hearing three-twenty-five.
Three-twenty-five, sorry. We've also provided testimony for Bill three-twenty-five. And really, our, our testimony is very, is quite short and sweet. That we are currently tracking consumer complaints and consumer concerns for, for a good many years already. We just haven't formalized it to a publication as requested by three-twenty-five. So for, from the standpoint of GPA, we're already, we're already performing those responsibilities and maintaining a database. It's, it's a very small stepping stone to, for us to proceed in complying with Bill three-twenty-five with a formal publication as requested by the bill. So it's really, we're, GPA's in full support of the bill from, from how it's written.
So with the database that you have right now, would you be able to, like, on an annual basis, provide statistics as to the number of complaint cases that were open, number that were basically responded to satisfactorily and closed, or, and the number that was still pending, is that sort of statistic available without getting into the weeds as to what each?
Yeah, you know, notwithstanding customer and employee privacy issues, those are fully protected. I think we, we have an aging of when complaints were submitted. We have the, the concerns, or the description of the concern, whether it be a damage complaint or just a concern or a complaint in general. And then the disposition of that complaint and how it was, how it was, how it was managed or dealt with, we, I think we have that. It's just a matter of developing a, a formal SOP within GPA to, to do what you ask, if that, if, if those are requested, and the formal publications for that.
Okay, Vice Speaker?
I have no questions. I'll listen to Simon first.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Speaker, and thank you, Senator. You know, we, we applaud the fact that GPA has sort of taken the lead. When we first saw the legislation, actually had a chance to speak to Speaker Ben, you know, we, we talked a little bit about the issue of, you know, what constitutes a complaint, right? We have customer service people throughout Guam, places to pay your bills throughout Guam. Someone can come in and complain about the level of service, a leak, you know, and trying to get your arms around, characterizing all of that, and doing it in a meaningful way so we can make a meaningful report, because that's clearly Senator Ben's intent. And so what I like about the bill, what we, we're comfortable with the bill, is it gives the CCU some discretion to develop a program. If the body wants to add a little more clarity, you know, to help us, you know, you do hear complaints, you know, what, what are the kinds of issues that you, you know, someone will complain, well, I don't like Simon Sanchez, and the rates are too high, I mean, that, that's a complaint. Do we, do we log those, or are you interested in the ones where something broke, and did we fix it in a timely manner, or did we have a customer issue that, you know, we didn't treat the customer right, or did we reimburse them properly? I think those are meaningful, and those are the kinds of things we're looking for their SOP to kind of help clarify what that might be. But, you know, the intent is, the spirit of the intent is, we understand. It's just, and the bill gives us the discretion to kind of figure out what's the best mechanism. Is it an annual report, quarterly report? And what exactly is it? You know, we have eight hundred reports of this, and seven hundred and twenty-two were resolved successfully, and seventy-eight are still pending. You know, that's one way we could do the report. I kind of wrestle with, does that tell you anything useful or not? Unless it said we had eight hundred reports, and only one hundred have been resolved, and seven hundred are pending, and one quarter later, we published the report, and it's still a low number. And so I think that kind of accountability is what I believe was the intention of, of the author. So we, we, you know, we can work with this bill if it becomes law. You give us some discretion. If you can give us any additional guidance on the kinds of things you believe that ratepayers and we'll want, we'll want that kind of information, that it'll be useful to them. We appreciate any guidance you can give us.
Mister Chairman, I was not a co-sponsor in the bill, but I had asked Senator Ben's office to provide me with just a short statement of what they remembered his intent to be, and if it would be all right if I could just read it. This bill was introduced as a way of further empowering Guam's ratepayers by expanding communications between and among the people of Guam, the Public Utilities Commission, the Consolidated Commission on Utilities. One of the main ways to accomplish this outside of the Ratepayer's Bill of Rights was to establish a procedure for distributing ratepayer complaints. Additionally, the bill that passed into law will hold the power and water utility agencies and their governing bodies accountable for addressing each complaint. There may be individual procedures that each utility agency has to collect and address such concerns. But with this bill, there will be one uniform standard to collect, address, distribute, and communicate consumer complaints filed against the Guam Power Authority and the Guam Water Works Authority. In the end, Bill three-twenty-five twenty-four will complement the intent of the Ratepayer Bill of Rights to further serve and empower the ratepayers of Guam, and provide an avenue to ensure ratepayer voices are heard and addressed.
And if I could have a copy of that?
Yeah, that's useful to us. That's actually useful to us.
That's my thought, I agree with you.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. And if there's no further testimony on that, we'll deem Bill three-two-five dash three-two COR as having been duly heard. We're gonna go ahead and move directly now into Bill three-two-six COR, which is an act to amend Section eighty-five-oh-two, Chapter eight, Title twelve Guam Code annotated relative to increasing the cap on customer generator power service entrance capacity for non-residential class customers. I'm gonna go ahead and call the individuals in the order that they've signed up. And so we'll start with Mr. Servino, and then Mr. Ben Torres, followed by Mr. Hagan, and then closing it out would be Mr. Ken Flores and Simon Sanchez. Okay, Mr. Servino?
Okay. Good afternoon, senators. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to make a testimony on this proposed bill. My name is Jose Santo Servino. I'm a resident of Jigoo, Guam. I am a professional engineer, and I have been conducting business in Guam for over fifty years in the energy, electrical, electronics, telecommunications, computers, information technology, and construction management fields. The purpose of this testimony is to provide information to the Guam Legislature so I can properly act on Bill three-two-six, that's six-two. The present net metering law only allows for hundred KW solar turn system, renewable energy for non-residential facilities. Most states allow for higher generation, and I have a attachment that shows those states. This bill, to increase the capacity allowed to two-fifty KW, makes a lot of sense, as most non-residential facilities has demand loads much larger than hundred KW. They need to have higher generation capability to be able to avoid paying high-power rates from high fuel oil prices. This bill will also support the renewable energy goals established by Guam, Bill number one-six-six enacted in March two thousand eight, which established a renewable energy portfolio goal of twenty-five percent by two thousand thirty-five. I am in support of the bill for two-fifty KW net metering generation capacity to promote more use of renewable energy and minimize the use of polluting fuel oil, reduction of carbon emission, and reduction in the exportation of Guam dollars. This will also improve the economy by expanding the renewable energy business and creating more employ, employees. Thank you. That's the last one.
Thank you, Mr. Servino. Mr. Torres, was it just a written testimony you wanted? Yes, we have a copy of your testimony here. Is it this one? Okay. Did you need that to read off, or? Okay, but did you want to make an oral presentation? Not necessarily? Okay, fine. So we'll note that you have provided written testimony. Mr. Hagan?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Speaker.
Afternoon.
I've submitted written testimony previously when the public hearing was established. No point in me reading it into the record, it's there. I think it's, it's a good bill. Senator Ben was part of the original legislation that introduced net metering in two thousand four. Two thousand ten, when he recognized that the limit was very small, that the twenty-five was too small, he introduced legislation to raise it to one hundred and twenty-five for the two classes. And earlier this year, he apparently saw that there was a need to fine-tune or tweak that number a little bit and raise the upper limit from one hundred to two-hundred and fifty. I don't think it's gonna be a significant impact to GPA, although they tend to think that it's going to destroy their economy. It's not a big number. The, at a, at a public presentation about two weeks ago, I heard Commissioner Duane speaking about some of the challenges being faced by GPA, and he spoke about conservation, he spoke about energy efficiency. He did not speak about net metering as being an impact to GPA's revenue. They, of course, have different opinion, which they're entitled to, but I think it's a good bill. It's not gonna affect a lot of customers of ours, that's not gonna affect a lot of things in the industry, and we'll go forward and we'll end up doing a thousand net metering customers. A very small number will probably be in the two-hundred and fifty range. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
I don't have any questions. Did you have any questions? Okay. GPA, Mr. Flores?
Thank you, Senator. I, I think, before I started, I didn't want to put everything into context. I, I don't think we're worried about the skies falling and our, and our economy crashing. I think we're worried about, and I've always testified, that there's a subsidy in policy that is being transferred to folks or ratepayers that do not enjoy the benefits of net metering. And the purpose of our testimony is really to, to, to have those that are preparing and, and developing policies, either the POC or the legislature, understand what the impacts are. Really, and, and for our sake, for our purposes, we condone and we promote the use of renewables so that it's fairly and equitably shared with the benefits for all ratepayers. That's my position as General Manager to protect. And that I see that nearly eleven thousand customers in the residential class, from our record to our demographics, are lifeline consumers of power. It indicates to me that those, those customers, nearly a fourth of our revenue base for the residential class, may be very, finding very difficult to implement and, and achieve the benefits of net metering. I wanted to share that with you, and I want to comment with other demographics as I go forward. So really, within the context, it's understanding the impact. We're not against solar. In fact, we're the largest solar developer in the entire region with a thirty-five thousand KW solar facility at Nunda that will help save power for nearly three thousand homes that comes, comes this December. By next year, or twenty sixteen, when the wind solar facility comes in, that's another thousand customers. And we have a bid closing in about a month for another forty megawatts of renewable, renewable energy for another four thousand homes to benefit by reducing the overall, overall fuel costs to those ratepayers that everybody shares, not just a few. And so really, the purpose of this testimony is to kind of show you that from my position, I like to protect all ratepayers so that they are not adversely affected, and that it doesn't cause a death spiral with higher and higher prices that affect them and not net metering consumers. In addition, I would like to show you, in my testimonies provided for you, that based on actual demographics from the last five years or so of net metering, we only have a hundred and forty-four customers that have signed up for these agreements. And less than thirty-five customers are, have signed up for the hundred KW limit. So the incentive for a hundred KW net metering provisions are there, and we have nearly five hundred customers that are exceeding this hundred KW limit, but only thirty-four have signed up. So the incentives are provided with the net metering policy, but people have not joined on that bandwagon. So with that, I'd like to start with my written testimony and going through some of the details. Again, thank you again for giving the Guam Power Authority an opportunity to testify on Bill three-twenty-six dash thirty-two. GPA has been a leader in the community with regards to renewable energy, and we support renewable energy projects that can lower the cost of energy for all GPA consumers. GPA has contracted thirty-five thousand KW of renewables under Phase One, and is currently in the process of procuring an additional forty-five thousand KW of renewable energy. And that does not preclude other renewable technologies such as wind, biofuels, perhaps waste their energy, if it's allowed. perhaps waste their energy if it's allowed, uh, et cetera. These projects will benefit all ratepayers because energy purchase, the energy purchase price would be at, at or lower than our avoided system costs. It seems at times that GPA is not seen as a strong proponent for renewal, for renewables when it's quite the contrary as conceived by these huge investments into renewable energies. These investments will cost over the next twenty-five or twenty years, nearly a hundred million dollars. But it will also save ratepayers tremendous amount of fuel across all rate classes on a year-by-year basis for the next twenty-five years. We have been supporting and administering the net metering projects as established by law. The existing net metering program is subject to limitations of twenty-five KW for residential projects and a hundred KW for commercial projects. There are currently a hundred and forty-four net metering customers totaling about seventeen hundred KW based on their sign-up capacity with us in their agreements for solar PV and wind capacity. I believe there's one or two customers for wind. And just to give you, just to share some, some, some highlights, we have nearly thirty, thirty-four thousand customers with less than twenty-five KW for the residential class. So there's, so even at a hundred and forty-four, a good majority, a significant majority have not signed up for net metering. There must be reasons for that. Maybe their net costs, their outlay in capital investments, uh, creditworthiness, et cetera, et cetera. I, I can't answer that. But, but our demographics over the last five years is a very small number are signing up even though the incentives are there for capacities at twenty-five and capacities at a hundred KW. For, for customers, actual customers with demand meters in excess equal to, uh, or in, or a hundred KW and in, and greater, it's a five hundred, I mean, four hundred and eighty-four customers of which thirty-four have signed up for the hundred KW net metering agreement. So we got a good many other customers to go before we hit a, a, a point where we ask ourselves, is a hundred KW not enough to make it economical? Or is it just that they don't want, they choose not to do it? We don't know the reasons, but the incentives are there. When we extrapolate this out, as I provided in my testimony, the, the hundred forty-four out to one thousand customers as allowed for by the PUC, we end up on or about twelve thousand KW. And I think there, there is where we see the issues. It's open-ended, Senators. The PUC in one hand says a thousand customers for net metering. The public law says twenty-five, a hundred KW. But there's no definition of what that subsidy is. From our calculations, if we extrapolate out to a thousand customers, given the current limits, it results to about three million dollars in what we define as a subsidy that other ratepayers would have to pay. I just wanna put that in context that that's the concern, not that we don't promote net metering or don't, we don't condone solar or wind or renewables. It's understanding what that subsidy is for you to develop a policy. And that our position is, it's nice to know what the limits are of the subsidy so that we can plan year over year to allow for greater and greater penetration. But if we don't have any definition of what it is, it's a runaway train. We could have a thousand one, one hundred KW customers or we could have a thousand residential customers. But that's not the case with the demographics. It's, it's less than a fourth with the residential class entering into these agreements. So, in my testimony, we said, look, if you then change the two hundred, the hundred to two hundred and fifty KW, we gave you some samples of what that impact could be. Now, understanding that we only have about four hundred and eighty-four customers that have demands that are greater than two hundred and fifty KW and that even today, they have not enjoyed the hundred KW limit for some reason or other. We cannot explain that to you. I cannot explain that to you. What I understand in the technology is that these are scalable technologies. You, you can put in the first hundred KW. If the law passes, they can expand up to higher and higher capacity levels. But why haven't they done it at all is a question that needs to be answered. And why they have not exercised their, the, the, the benefits of net metering under the current agreements that we have today with a full retail reimbursement on, on energy. But nonetheless, if it should happen that we raised the cap to two fifty, I gave you a table on page, uh, three that extrapolates out that, I show you first of all, on the upper part of that table, the energy that can be produced, uh, is a nearly, uh, more than a half a million KWH per year. At twelve and a half cents base rate cost, not fuel, you see that that's about sixty-eight thousand dollars per customer, per year. And if we, and if we looked at capping the customers, say twenty-five customers or fifty customers or a hundred customers or as high as four hundred and eighty-four customers, the ultimate limit of GPA's customer base that is exceeding a hundred KW up to two hundred and fifty KW, the subsidy, Senators, could be one point seven million at twenty-five or thirty-three million at four hundred and eighty-four customers. So that's our point. These numbers are real. These, the historical energies that we use to calculate this are customers that exist today. And yes, there's nearly twenty, uh, eight million dollars in, in, uh, in fuel avoided costs. And we applaud that. That's what we're trying to do even with the quantum project in Phase One and the Phase Two forty-five me- megawatt project is to reduce overall costs and provide some system avoidance. We're trying to avoid costs, O and M, variable O and M, fuel costs, et cetera. But we're stuck with this fixed cost that doesn't go away when customers, uh, separate from the grid and are no longer contributing. We may not, we may not prevail in the argument that a subsidy will persist. Today, you have subsidies with, eh, investment tax credits, uh, with the federal government. That in itself has already a policy that says others will subsidize that tax base. We've already had this thousand customer limit by the PUC, already acknowledging that there will be a subsidy nonetheless. But now we're changing this open-ended issue within one thousand customers and ca- and capacity with not defining how much this subsidy, subsidy gonna cost. And that's our, that's my testimony. And if we know what it is, we can plan for it every year. And we can live within that context of the subsidies, three million, five million, ten million. We can plan for that and allocate the cost throughout all other ratepayers if that is the desire by the policy in our rates. And everybody knows upfront, it's transparent and known that we will fund X million dollars a year, year over year, with subsidies for net metering. We don't have a problem with that, but we need to know what it is. And we cannot be hitting ratepayers in mid, in mid-year or every two years, every one year. Oops, we have a rate increase because we didn't, we didn't anticipate the flood of net metering customers to our, to our doorstep. That is not gonna be, uh, well-received. It's gonna provide potentially rate shock and it's gonna be very unpopular. And so, the, the whole crux of this testimony is this. We still have a, a grid to maintain. Our friend Bill Hagan and Gria have acknowledged that the, the grid must be healthy in order for net metering to be successful. Otherwise, you would have to rely on storage other than GPA such as batteries. Even today, we're struggling with trying to find the best technologies for battery storage so that renewables can exist in microgrids or self-generation, et cetera, et cetera. But they don't exist today for small applications. They're evolving and they may evolve to something that is very affordable. But at this time, Senators, we have, I have a grid to maintain and operate and to ensure that it's safe and to ensure that it's reliable and that net metering can tap into that at night, at any time and be assured that there's storage available with the grid. The other thing that I'm promoting in this testimony is this. The subsidies is coming from a smaller piece of the pie, base rates. What I'm promote, what I'm proposing in this testimony is that it's a three hundred and fifty million dollar fuel expense for GPA. We're trying to reduce that to the extent possible with renewables. The, the policy already that has been endorsed and adopted and approved by the PUC is to take all renewable energy from quantum and charge that as a LEAC fuel expense. If we take net metering in, in context of the subsidy and put that in the LEAC bucket of money, three hundred, three hundred and fifty million dollars versus a hundred and fifty million dollars, the impact to the customer spread out over that revenue base is much smaller. And it's true that every six months to capture net metering immediately and in, in, and, and track that within a constraint of a subsidy. So, so with, with this testimony, let, let me summarize very simply. If we extrapolate out today, the net metering program, it will amount to about twelve thousand KW. I s- I would support that rather than to cherry pick on what cap is, is needed for commercial or what cap is needed for residential. Now, albeit, the law does not provide me or allow me to say on a case-by-case basis, oh, we haven't exceeded the, the, the cap for capacity. I can exercise discretion to say, well, let me allow a three hundred KW system or a seventy-five KW system here or a one fifty KW system. It does not allow me to do that. It's very restrictive, twenty-five or one hundred. If I look at it in the context of twelve thousand KW and three million dollars in subsidies, I would, I would test the application for net metering against that, the two things. Capacity limit, subsidy limit for cost. That's a better way to manage it, I believe, in my opinion. But that's not what is being proposed in this bill. It's to raise now the hundred KW to twenty, two hundred and fifty KW and it still leaves it open-ended to say, where are we gonna end up with subsidies? What is it gonna be? How much is it gonna cost other ratepayers? Is the cap twelve thousand KW now or is it gonna be twenty K, twenty thousand KW or thirty thousand KW? We have no idea. I would be, I would be, uh, recommending that every year, the cap should be revisited. So that if it, if the, if the system, if we install battery storage that are proven unacceptable in the future and we can ha- we can allow more penetration, we should expand the cap. And so, we're agnostic to saying twenty-five hun- hundred. We should say maybe those are benchmarks for residential and commercial but allow discretion to say it has to be within the context of maybe a rate structure with the PUC. And let the PUC define what that subsidy should be for other customers that are not enjoying net metering. And so, that's the crux of my testimony. And please, I hope that no one in this room is believing that GPA is not promoting renewables. We're the largest developer of renewables in the entire region. And we're trying to promote another forty-five thousand megawatts and forty-five thousand KW of renewables over the next two years. And we are now engaging with the solar rooftop system that is shortly gonna come out with another tender and, and contacted the Navy and Navy has contacted us to partner with them to develop more renewables for their facilities up to fifteen to forty megawatts of renewable energy for a customer. So, they come to us for the leadership and the guidance to promote this enlarged-scale grid-type solar PV or net metering. So, with that, I provided my, my written testimony for you to, to review. Uh, I, I think those are essentially, is, the essentials of my testimony that I'm trying to convey to you today. The numbers that everybody believes are there are really not there because, you know, you only have five hundred customers in excess of a hundred KW. If that, uh, a lot of that is government, by the way, uh, not all commercial. I'm, I'm just looking at it, eh, all customers with demand in excess of a hundred KW. And they have not signed up for whatever reasons we, I cannot answer today. For the residential class, we have a significant number of lifeline customers. A fourth of our demo, our customer base are lifeline consumers. Passing on those subsidies to the lifeline customers is bad enough to begin with. So, uh, please be, be mindful of that impact as you develop the final, uh, the final, uh, bill with regard to this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Senators. You know, everyone in this room is trying to grow the use of renewable energy here. I, I, I don't, I don't question anybody, uh, anybody's motives or ambitions for Guam that we all wanna get away from the, using oil for a hundred percent of our needs and renewable energy is providing the best alternative for that. The federal government and by extension, because the tax code is a mirror image on Guam, the Guam, the government of Guam has already said, we will subsidize buyers of renewable energy. We will allow them to take tax credits, one of your favorite topics, allow them to take tax credits against what they pay the general fund. And we've got a hundred and forty Guamanian customers that have taken advantage of that. The general fund has subsidized them. I don't know what the number is, but whatever the number is, it was a reflection that our country and our island said, we need to grow renewables. We don't wanna just rely on oil. That train is going in the right direction. It, GPA and the community has now tried to implement more renewables. And the difference really is in, is, is in approach. Take the Dundun project. That's gonna save energy for three thousand homes, uh, on an annual basis, right? The equivalent, energy of three thousand homes. The forty megawatts we've just commissioned will save another three or four thousand homes. The Navy wants to do something. GCC wants to do something with us. When you add up all these annual savings, what it really saves GPA and its ratepayers is fuel. So let's say for the sake of discussion, the three thousand here, the four thousand there. Let's say that if we were to successfully implement all these projects, Dundun's gonna open, the forty megawatts we're bidding out now, uh, the Navy and GCC and, and hopefully, if we can get together, uh, the DOE bill, which also has the potential to help DOE. All of those have a, have the opportunity to save fuel. And that's what Ken means when he says he applauds the savings of fuel. Fuel is the biggest expense we have. PDN ran a story last December that said ninety percent of the rate increases in the last ten years have been because of fuel. It's not because of base rates, it's not because of, yeah, it's not because of base rates. It's not because of the cost of the generators or the cost of O and M or the cost of transmission and distribution. It's been oil. So every policy we, we implement that reduces the use of oil is a good policy. The challenge for all of us is what's the best way to manage this, develop it and grow it without creating an unintended consequence on other, on other people? When we, with, with NRG, we only pay them our avoided costs, the LEAC, the cost of our fuel, eighteen, nineteen cents a kilowatt hour. It, it inches up over time, uh, over the twenty-five years, but it's designed to be a hedge against oil. Cause who knows what oil will do over the next twenty, twenty-five years? Recent history says it ain't gonna go this way, it's gonna go that way. So we're willing to pay for the avoided costs of fuel to NRG and they have found a way, because it's a big project, that they can make a nickel, still create solar energy during daylight hours and enough solar energy to save three thousand homes worth of fuel. So that when that thing is fully functioning next year, instead of buying this much fuel, we buy a little less fuel because we've saved fuel, the equivalent of fuel for three thousand homes. I, I forget the numbers, it's, it's been in our other testimonies, but we'll save a little money on fuel. And we're willing to pay NRG for those savings and we share those savings with all customers. Net metering takes a different approach. It says there may be individuals and there are developers who can work together and create a renewable solution for them that would allow that customer to save their, their energy costs, even drive it all the way down to zero. We, we, we know of some of our NAM customers, net metering customers that have been able to drive their, their bill all the way down to zero. They provided enough energy to GPA during the, the recent month equal to the amount of energy they consumed. And under net metering, they get a, they get a one-for-one, a hundred percent credit. They, they get to roll their meter back all the way to zero. That's great. That's what it's supposed to do. That's what we want it to do. And most, most of the country, I think maybe all of the country, have said, hey, we should promote net metering. We like this relationship. Here's another way to save the use of fuel. But then, there's been a huge debate, healthy debate, I think, as this is, this net metering policy has matured in the mainland and now here on Guam, about a recognition that while it saves fuel, it saves energy for that particular consumer, it provides a reasonable return to a solar developer like our, our friends in Gria. They make a nickel as they should. They should get their cost back. They make a nickel as they should. They should get their cost back plus a, a fair profit. And they save money for that individual customer. But what happens at night when the sun goes down? The generators must give some energy back to those NEM customers. It goes on transmission lines. It carries that energy to their, their houses. It goes through distribution lines. It goes to a transformer and it returns the power that they give us during the day. It returns the power to them. And that's great. But the challenge with net metering now, as it matures, is that customer and by extension, that developer, they don't pay for those costs of generating the energy at night and the transmission and the distribution and all the related costs, the labor, the maintaining all those assets and the debt service. All of those costs are not charged to a net metering customer today. And that's because we wanted to grow the industry. It's growing faster outside of Guam than it is on Guam. But we're hopeful, uh, that with the tax incentives expiring in twenty sixteen, more, there will be more uptake. There's more providers now in Grea. There's more knowledge about it. I, we expect to see more customers doing net metering and taking advantage of the existing law. And that, and that part's okay. And, uh, and we want to see that happening. But the, the question that's emerging for all of us, that is our concern, is when this bill says now let's take it up to two hundred fifty KW, it's not so much, the, to me, it's not so much that there are, there are customers that could successfully deploy renewable energy at larger capacities, hundred fifty, two hundred, two fifty. You know, Ken's done some all, some of the numbers. We don't know if everyone that, that could do it will do it. Uh, these numbers give you sort of an outside range, what would happen if they all did it, what would happen if less did it? But it gives you a range of somewhere between a million and twenty million dollars of, of annual rev- uh, of revenue impact. And all we're saying is, we would love to get, you know, some more definition so that we're not, we're not guessing as to what that would be. But in this debate that's gone on, what's emerging is a very healthy argument, the value of, it's called the value of solar. We could say it's the value of renewables. There's clearly a valuable, a value to renewable energy. Clearly in all, in the fuel savings, there's no disagreement between us and renewable energy providers. It's on those fixed costs. It's on what happens when the wind doesn't blow and the sun doesn't shine. And the sun doesn't shine every day for ten to twelve hours a day. So a NEM customer, a solar NEM customer in particular, uh, gets power at night from those same assets that before all ratepayers paid for. But now under net metering, the original law and the PUC ruling is saying, well, at least for the first thousand customers, you can use all those assets for free because we're trying to grow, grow your industry. And okay, that's a fair trade. We want it to grow. The challenge is, should the growth be unlimited? This bill, by raising the capacity without setting a cap, creates the potential for rapid expansion of renewable energy utilization by individuals. But it would cost those ratepayers that can't access, for whatever reason, like all the ones that, all, all the low income families that are, that just for whatever reason, don't have the financial resources. Or as Ken has pointed out, for whatever reason, we're nowhere near a thousand customers yet on net metering. Right? But I'm, we're all hoping that with the tax credits wiping out, you, you better do it sooner or, or you're going to lose it. And even think about the tax credits. Even though we wanted to promote the growth of renewable energy, even the tax credits are limited. They didn't say, we'll give you these subsidies forever. They said by twenty sixteen, they go away. So the whole idea of subsidies is you want to nurture that child into a mature, a more mature state and then let that industry, in this case, the renewable industry, grow as it will. But you want to strike that balance. I keep, I, I will talk about the, there's a three-legged stool here. There's the, there's the customer that wants to use renewable energy as an individual, business or at home. There's the developers that can provide that service and should get a piece of that savings. So the customer can save and the developer can save and that's how they, they survive and they create the jobs that have benefits for the community. But our concern is what we call the stranded cost. The cost of the things that at night still have to be used by a, a net metering customer to get their power back. If we put it another way, if you were to ask anybody that knows anything about renewables and said, if GPA didn't exist, could the renewable industry today charge the same prices that they're charging with the tax subsidy? Could they charge the same prices without GPA existing? And the answer would be no, because there's no way to store solar energy at night. You, you need the generators to turn back on. Even when solar energy is giving us energy right now, well, maybe not now. I mean, here's a good example. It was giving us energy this morning, more than it's giving us energy now because it's cloudy and rainy. Our generators throttled back. It saved fuel, didn't reduce, didn't eliminate the generator. It saved us fuel. That we give to our renewable partners. There, there's no debate on that. But now our generators have to kick back in, sending power down, transmission line, distribution line, transformers to our net metering customers, to all our customers. And right now, all our customers are, before net metering, all our customers paid for those assets and their related costs. Under net metering law, we've created an incentive to grow it and says, you don't have to pay those costs. We're saying for now it's twenty-five and a hundred KW and we're comfortable with saying two hundred fifty KW. But two things have happened in the past year, um, that, that of note, that I think you want to think about. And that maybe will help us strike a compromise here. The, th- this debate's raging everywhere, right? The, the value of solar, the value of the grid. And we were all watching what the Arizona PUC would do. And if, if, if you ever want to read an amusing story, you'll love it because you campaigned for your seat. The battle in Arizona had full-page ads and blogs and interest groups, you know, accusing each other as a, you know, just, we could have put, you know, Governor X and Governor Y and it would have been the same kind of aggressive posture. You know, there should be no charge for net metering and the utility saying, no, you got to charge. You got to charge something. And the Arizona PUC finally ruled. And they ruled that you have to charge something for those assets that are being used by renewable energy, uh, customers. Now, they didn't agree with the utility how much to charge, but they also didn't agree with the NEM advocates that say they shouldn't pay anything. It should just be unlimited, right? They struck a balance. They recognize that until technology allows renewable energy to be a hundred percent independent of a grid like GPAs or the backup, or the generation of GPA, until they can make all the energy they need all the time, like GPA does, they, there is a cost imposed on the system that right now they don't pay for, but everyone else does pay for. And what Ken's testimony points out is if it's left to be a runaway train and it becomes really successful, maybe the rate impact is twenty million dollars. Maybe it's only a million dollars. Right now, it's only four hundred thousand a year. That's okay. We can, GPA can live with that. We're looking at ways to cut costs. We're looking at, we're going to retire some generation sooner than we had planned to save money. You know, we, that's our job. We need to do that no matter what. We can handle that. What we're here to tell you is we can handle four, four hundred thousand. We think we can handle three million. We're willing to commit to three million in annual revenue to subsidize the growth of the renewable industry. What we're nervous about is beyond three million, you start talking about an impact on the rest of the ratepayer community that isn't a NEM customer, for whatever reason, they're just not there. They got to pick up the costs for the entire system while some customers get to use the system and not have to contribute to that cost. And that's where, that's not really fair in our view to the rest of the ratepayers. And that's where it's a three-legged stool, savings for the individual NEM customer, savings or profit, reasonable profit for the developer. But some recognition, like Arizona PUC finally ruled, that there is a cost at night when the sun doesn't shine or the cloudy day, when, when you're not making as much solar energy, there is a cost to get you the same amount of enge- energy, you, the NEM customer, to get them the same amount of energy they would have otherwise consumed, whether from their resource or our resource. In Kauai, they did what we're alluding to here and we would like you to consider. They took a total kilowatt hour cap and they said, we'll do a hundred percent NEM until that cap is hit. But once you hit that cap, that's it. So it's kind of what Ken was alluding to. What is the subsidy that we in the community are willing to contribute to the growth of renewable energy? Right now, you have no say on the, the general fund subsidy. It's the federal tax code, the credit lasts till twenty sixteen. You don't know how many, what, what if a thousand customers grab, grab renewable energy in the next eighteen to twenty-four months before the tax credits expire? Have you factored in at twenty, thirty thousand dollars of, of credit? You know, I don't know if those are the right numbers, but they're in that magnitude. Take twenty to thirty thousand times a thousand. That's going to come out of your budget in the next twenty-four months if a thousand customers take off. What if you pass this long, it's now two fifty and it's unlimited reimbursement, unlimited NEM? Do the math on that tax credit, right? And if you raise this two hundred fifty KW, which is, which isn't our issue. We, we can handle that. We can handle the load. We're not like Hawaii Electric where they say, oh, the, the circuits are going to fail. Nah, we, we've done some internal studies. We, we can handle the growth of the renewables. It's the dollar piece. It's the piece beyond fuel savings that we worry about. Fuel savings you can have. You should have. Some, some payment, some recognition to grow that industry and to recognize that you're doing a good thing even for the customer and, and the industry should be paid. But should it be a hundred percent? So what we're proposing at, at the end of Ken's, um, testimony is that the bill be amended to set a cap of twelve thousand kilowatt, um, net metering capacity. And then I would suggest that you delegate to the PUC. This conversation doesn't have to end here. It doesn't have to end with this legislation and the law that might emerge from it. You already have a very qualified PUC who has the ability to access expertise. We're not experts. I'm not really an expert. You know, we, we know this much, right? But they can access the expertise that can test our, our thinking, that can see what other parts of the community, other parts of the United States in particular, but even Europe's going through the same debate. What are they doing? How are they pricing the cost of the system? Are they, is it unlimited forever? Uh, if not, what, what restrictions are they doing? Like Arizona said, hey, you're going to have to pay something. In fact, Arizona, not only said you have to pay something, all the customers that were already customers, they didn't get grandfathered. They said, you got two years. In two years, you're paying something. So at least one PUC with all the tremendous attention that it got, I mean, the whole country was watching their decision. We're watching Hawaii. We're watching California. They're the biggest growers of renewable energy. We can learn from them. They too are wrestling with what's the proper balance between the developer, the NEM customer and the rest of the ratepayers who, who can't do it. So we would propose that you consider amending the bill to set an overall capacity cap. Uh, the two fifty KWH is not a problem. It's, but it's the total energy that gets created when you have all these different players putting in their systems. When it adds up to twelve thousand KWH, we're saying, stop at least a hundred percent net metering and delegate to the PUC to begin a docket, a study, to take it upon themselves to say, okay, now what's the next, what's the next best decision to keep the growth of renewable energy going? But to also recognize that there are some costs and we'll have more data. You know, Ken talked about, you know, we can look at it every year. I like the fact that if you give it to the PUC and, and require them to look at it annually, you already have a mechanism within the PUC to bring in expertise, to take a look at it and Gria, ourselves, yourselves, other players can get in a room again and say, well, what have we learned? After we allowed it to grow this much and letting them exist up to this much, what have we learned? Can we keep going? Maybe we can. The PUC can make that decision. We don't have to run back to the legislature, you know, create the law and all that. So that's what, um, I would suggest the body consider is raise that cap on the, to the two fifty, but limit the total amount of energy basically that can be generated from that cap that is eligible for a hundred percent net metering subsidy. Once you hit that number, delegate to the PUC to do studies, to rec- to determine what a new rate for net metering should be. Just like the Arizona PUC did. They ended up coming up with a number. Uh, it wasn't a hundred percent net. It was some number. That, I think that, that's a nice way to keep the industry growing, uh, and allow revisits in a way that we can make intelligent policy calls for, for all of our ratepayers. Uh, the net metering customer needs us to have that grid working well too. You know, even though we're going to subsidize them, we're still going to, even though we're going to give them three million dollars, let's say, is the current estimate, just based on the actual, uh, folks, we're still going to have to spend money on our system. We're just not going to get it from these a hundred forty customers, but that's okay. They're doing something we've never had done before and we want to see it grow. And we want to see how far we can grow it. And as long as it's not an adverse impact, we should grow it as far as we can. If it starts to become adverse, we need a mechanism like the PUC who can quickly act and say, wait a minute, we're seeing the trend. We have some concerns. Let's get the industry in here. Let's get GPA in here. And say, what, where should we go? We're getting close to this cap, this twelve thousand KWH. Uh, what should we do next? I think that would be a, 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 a good policy to create that gives it flexibility, allows the growth, doesn't restrict our renewable partners from the size of their solution for their customer. I, I, I think, and I think that's a positive for them, all right? Uh, I'm sure they were, they were fearful that we might come in here and say, ah, no, stay at the twenty-five or the hundred. We're really not worried about the impact of an individual, uh, NEM customer, regardless of size. We're interested on the cumulative impact if all of those customers of that size were to exercise that option and get a hundred percent subsidy from existing ratepayers. That we think needs, there needs to be a balance. And by capping what, like, just like Kauai did, by capping the amount of energy that can be subsidized, you have a number that we can all, we could tell you. We can say that the subsidy won't be more than this number. And then we'll work hard to see we can cut our costs and not have to deal with any rate adjustment. That's, that'll be our first, uh, goal. But it, if, if you take Ken's worst case, you know, we can cover what, four hundred thousand, we can cover three million. Covering twenty million a year becomes, now becomes a more difficult problem. Will it hit twenty? Who knows? But it's going, it should grow. We want it to grow. But that there needs to be some balance and some cap and we're suggesting on the gross energy side, not on the capacity side. Is where you should put that cap and then to delegate, as most states have done now, they give it to their PUC and say, you guys figure this out after we get you going. Um, so that's, that would be my suggestion. Create this cap, delegate to the PUC, that any further, uh, utilization of a hundred percent NEM be a determination of the PUC. It's, it's similar to their, their order to us that says, come see us when you have a thousand customers. Don't bother us for the first thousand customers. That's reasonable. That's fine. We can handle a thousand customers. We're wondering, where are they? How come we're not seeing more? I think you'll see more next year and the year after because the credits are, are widening. I mean, if you ain't going to do it in the next twenty-four months, your costs are going to go up significantly. So, um, that's our suggestion to try to balance the interests and give us opportunities through the PUC to revisit this issue in a meaningful way. Have healthy discussion, bring in all the parties. The PC has a very good process. For that, they're, they're driving your net metering policy right now. They're the ones that say, come see us after a thousand. Uh, I think they'd be an excellent place to put this kind of decision-making after, uh, you've launched, uh, this change.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. And I'll be the first to admit, um, that I probably did not understand completely all that you've said. So as a result of that, we're probably going to need to do a, um, renewable energy one oh one round table uh, to kind of go over these things again, but I'll be the first to admit that. I want to acknowledge, of course, Senator San Nicholas. Thank you for joining us. Um, I, I just, before I, I turned over to them, um, I, I just want to clarify one thing. I remember when discussions first started with the issue of net metering and, um, you know, what the capacity limit should be. Um, there was a, a lot of talk about, uh, grid stability. But I noticed that in all your discussion here, the issue of grid stability was not mentioned as a concern. Uh, such that then if you actually increased, um, the cap to two hundred fifty, um, grid stability is, is not a concern. Is, is that correct?
There, there are some members of, of, of our commission that are, that, um, are concerned. We're all concerned about grid stability. Some members of our commission are concerned that you, that you want, you do want to be careful about how much penetration renewables take in a, on a particular circuit, right? And, and, but, uh, our team took a preliminary look and said, there's, there's room to grow. So I think you want to worry about grid stability. You don't need to worry about it when you only have a hundred thirty-four. Uh, you do need to worry about it when certain, let, let's say if you raise it to two fifty and everybody in commercial Guam, in Tamooning, Dedodo and Tumon, you know, try to take advantage of it. Then you would want to worry about how can, how do the circuits in those areas respond to up, the up and down of renewable energy? Because that's what renewable is. It's, it's wonderfully, it's wonderful, but it's, it's not steady. It moves up and down. So that's why you have this issue of grid, of, uh, circuit, of grid impact. But the initial work I've seen from Ken and John B was, we can ha- we can tolerate some. Now, not all of us agree on, on that. Uh, and I would just say that it's a, it's a concern for us and we would, we would watch it. But that's an example of something we could run to the PUC and say, hey, circuit number twenty-nine B has got so much penetration that if we let one more customer come on, we're concerned, or ten more customers come on, we, we become concerned. And, and then do you just charge those ten customers for the impact or everybody that joined that circuit for the impact? Those are best left to a body like the PUC to sort out and, and we're not, uh, we're not inventing these questions. These are the same issues that other people are wrestling with. You know, how, you know, how, how much penetration can you allow on a circuit? And if you, and once you get that penetration, how do you charge the people that have created the penetration? That's a healthy debate. The PUC is equipped to get that expertise, I think, better than, better than the legislature. And having served on both, I, I mean, I think the PUC is, is a better place to put it. You're experts on many things, but as you said, this is not, this is complicated stuff.
Um, you kept mentioning, of course, about this subsidy that right now with, with the number of customers, um, in the system with renewables, uh, you estimate about a three million dollar annual subsidy, um, that is being given to the customers who have renewables.
Yeah, I, I apologize.
Maybe if you can clarify.
We have a hundred, if you look on page two of his testimony, we have a hundred forty-four customers that currently are only, they're only being subsidized to the tune of four hundred fourteen thousand dollars a year. But if you read the next paragraph, if we go to the thousand customers, the PUC initial threshold, then that could be three million a year. And I think that was the intention of the PUC. They were saying, hey, don't, don't, stop crying about fifty customers. Let's see it a thousand. Let's see what happens. And we're at a hundred forty-four and we think we'll have a lot more. Uh, you know, Bill and GRIA could tell you better than us, but we, we're confident they're gonna grow. Uh, but if you get a thousand customers, that's three million. And again, as Ken has pointed, put it well, and we would say the same. Are we willing to give three million to grow this industry? I think the answer would be yes. Where we get nervous is if you lift the cap of, from the twenty-five and the hundred to two fifty, you now can attract larger customers that have, use more power and therefore have greater opportunity to save. But they also take their, their contribution for fixed costs away as well if they're given a hundred percent net metering. Arizona finally ruled that you don't get a hundred percent. It's less than that, right? They, they, uh, but they did it after the industry grew for a while and there was a huge debate. It was, it was a great political campaign. But, so again, that's just recognizing that now's not the time to end net metering. And we're comfortable with lifting the energy cap, right? The capacity, how much, how much energy can be, the capacity cap, I have to say there. Now, as you know, even though you put so much capacity on, on a rooftop, since the sun doesn't shine or the wind doesn't blow twenty-four seven, it doesn't make that amount of energy three, you know, throughout the course of the year. It makes less energy. So that's why the, what Ken is proposing is not a capacity cap. Size doesn't matter. It's the amount of energy that gets created from the size of your capacity. Knowing that the sun will go down, knowing that the wind will, will not always blow. You'll see something called CF capacity factor in, in here. Um, and in plain English, what, uh, what it's, what it means is, we, we take NRG. It's twenty-five megawatts of capacity. At a hundred percent, at the perfect circumstances, sun shining, everything's looking good, typical May, May Guam, uh, you know, dry, dry season day. You can make twenty, twenty-five megs for that day. On a day like today, it's not gonna make twenty-five megs. And it don't make twenty-five megs at night. So there's a, what, the capacity factor is an estimate of how much energy. This thing is this big and it can make this much energy if it, if it worked twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. But because it can't, due to the laws of nature, its, its capacity factor is really only twenty-five percent of, of its, what do you call it? Nameplate output, if, if, if that can help you. Its nameplate is twenty-five megawatts. But at night, it ain't making twenty-five megawatts. So the amount of energy a twenty-five megawatt name plated solar farm can make at night is zero. During the day, it's a lot. You add it, and so that's what they mean by the capacity factor. It may have the capacity for twenty-five megs, but in actual practice over a, a course of a year, it's only gonna give you about twenty-five percent of that. And, but it's still saving us the amount of energy three thousand homes would use, saves us the amount of fuel three thousand homes would use. So we will lower our fuel purchases by those savings and chip away at the use of oil. We, we grow the renewable industry through GRIA. You do our project. You do GCC. We need, we think we need to revisit the DOE, uh, project because it's having trouble getting off the ground. Uh, but you do that, uh, and we just did another forty megawatts and the Navy wants to do something. We modeled up to a hundred fifty megawatts of renewable energy actually existing on Guam if all these possibilities, uh, emerge. Now, that's not the amount of energy they'll make over the, uh, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, but it's the amount of capacity that they could make, right? If all, all engines were firing all the time. And so, but, so we work, we, we, we work to manage that. And, but even when we ran a hundred fifty megawatts of renewable energy, because it's not twenty-four seven, we found you still have to have generators until storage can mature so that someone can put a battery on their house, Bill and, can put a system on their house and it will make enough energy during the day and store that energy in the evening so you can still have power. And then you don't need GPA. Then you shouldn't make a contribution to the grid. But right now, storage isn't that good. It's not, it's not financially feasible. Uh, it, it would be too expensive if we didn't exist and GRIA had to put battery storage on everybody, on their customers' house. They couldn't afford the system. They wouldn't do it. It's too expensive. They need it. That's where NEM came from. It recognized that you need to help this industry grow because it couldn't walk on its own. It couldn't provide twenty-four seven power on its own yet. And in fact, in reality, it'll never provide twenty-four seven power, but it sure can provide a lot of power that you shouldn't ignore and you should grow it. And, and that's the balancing act. As this non-firm, this non-twenty-four seven energy comes onto the system, you worry about grid stability, you worry about revenue impacts, you worry about making sure that you can give them back the energy that they save for us at night or when the wind doesn't blow. But all those assets that are required to do that have to get paid for. And right, right now, under a hundred percent NEM, the subsidy, we're saying, we're willing to give up, uh, four, uh, four hundred fourteen thousand, maybe three million. If you get a thousand customer, NEM customer, we'll give up three million dollars. What we're concerned about is, but past three million, is there, is there gonna be a cap on the, on the dollar impact? Not so much on the capacity impact. And we would be concerned, as, as some of our members are, that you can't overload, you can't hug renewables so much that you're, you overload a circuit and then you blow the circuit for everybody. Because not everyone on that circuit is gonna have renewable energy. So you have, that's why he has to worry about them. He has to worry about the other ratepayers. We have to worry about that grid. We can't just say, gee, we love renewable energy so, so much. Who cares what happens to the grid? Well, you'll care when you start having to shut down. We, we made the, uh, NRG do an impact study because we didn't wanna lose Talafoco while we're hugging twenty-five megawatts of renewable. So we wanna, we wanna embrace and grow renewables, but you wanna do it responsibly. Communities are debating this very much. Uh, and I, Senator, we've shared some of it with you. I mean, you, you can see there's a healthy debate going on and there's already been one milestone ruling and it, it did say NEM wasn't free, uh, unlimited free. And Kawai, I think, has a really good model. They just said, hey, let's pick the number that we're willing to subsidize and define it through energy, which is the right way to do it. Uh, and then after that, in Kawai, it's no more NEM, period. We're saying, give it to the PUC. Let, let's, let's, you know, let's not predict the future. Let's not overpredict the future today. Let's allow it to grow. Let's put some initial caps on it and then let the PUC revisit those caps and say, should we keep going? Or not, or strike, or what's the balance?
Okay, uh, Vice Speaker, um, Senator San Nicholas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I'm trying to multitask up here.
Well, I'm being a senator.
Thank you, uh, thank you, sir, for, um, providing, uh, as always, a very elaborate and detailed, um, description of what, what the situation is. And thank you also to the, um, General Manager for, for his, um, his testimony here as well. It's, it's very well received. I appreciate what's being shared. You know, honestly, that's, that's the kind of problem that I would really like us to, to run into. I want us to run into the problem of how are we going to figure out the balance between solar or alternative energy resources and traditional power generation? I really think that we're a long ways from running into that problem. And, you know, I, I, I understand that it, it could potentially be a very debilitating problem if, if, if it's completely ignored. But I think that we're doing the opposite extreme of kinda highlighting the problem so much that we're afraid to really turn on the spigot for the, uh, for the renewable side to just maximize its avai, available market share. And for me, my biggest concern is that thirty percent tax rebate. And, uh, the, the fact that we only have two years left to really avail ourselves of it. And under normal circumstances, I'd look at a bill like this and I'd be like, wow, we're only gonna, we're gonna lift the cap for the, the large customers and, you know, is that gonna squeeze out the smaller ones? But it has Speaker Pendleton's name on it. And so I gotta dig deeper and really find the meaning behind that. And what I realize is that the reason why he's willing to target this specific class of customer is because they're the ones who probably be most likely to avail of the credit over the next two years. Because the reality is that solar is still very expensive. I, um, I didn't estimate on my house. And I'm like, wow, that's not, that looks really attractive, but I just kinda forked to fork out the twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars right now. But maybe these larger businesses who maybe, maybe have some of these systems in play would like to upgrade. Or maybe there's businesses out there that are saying, you know what, we can go the full gamut. Why don't we just go for it if we can avail of the full credit? So I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm trying to put on Speaker Pendleton's glasses when I do. And I'm seeing that I think he's targeting the credit here. And I think he's trying to say, you know what, we only got two years. This class of customer will be the most likely to be able to avail of that credit. Let's, let's turn it on. And then I kinda rewind and I think about where we were with, um, Vice Speaker's bill on the minimum wage. And one of the biggest gripes from the business community was power bills. And I was like, hey, that's PUC, you know, but reality is, it's all of us. And, um, they were saying, you know, lower our cost of doing business, lower the cost of utilities. And, um, one of the easiest ways we can do that is to allow them to avail of renewables. And if we can get more of our commercial class customers, which would be the two hundred and fifty plus kilowatt customers, if we can get them to avail of that more over the next two years, then we'll be following through on, on answering their call. I mean, you know, we did, we did what we can to a small extent for the minimum wage worker, but now the time for us also to follow through for the business community. And if we can help them to, um, lower their cost of utilities for the useful life of a system that's what, twenty, thirty years? Let's go, let's do it. Win-win, right? We raised wages a little bit. Now we're helping them to save on their utility costs. And if the, the ceiling that we're looking at here is something that the agency is able to accept at three million, then, then let's go for it. And if it looks like, you know, all of a sudden, everybody's rushing through the doors and it's becoming a, a fiscal problem, then we should analyze that as well. But in that analysis, you know, I was just sitting up here thinking and I was like, there is a whole lot more to the equation than just simply saying, you know, we're going to subsidize the cost from the utility and the utility needs to make up those costs and where's it gonna come from? There's so many other economic factors that come into play. You know, we, if we reduce the cost of doing business by reducing the cost of power bills, those businesses might expand and grow. They might add to the ratepayer base. They might create more jobs that call, that creates more ratepayers because they're able to go out and afford more homes. You know, so the, the math is, isn't very linear. It's very, very, uh, uh, fluid, you know, um. Even if they, even if we have more commer, um, residential customers taking advantage of this, um, that creates more disposable income for them. I know that the question was raised. You know, what if we have so many people go out and take advantage of this and they all, all sap up the, the tax credit? Thirty percent at a thousand customers at thirty thousand dollars per system, which is a residential customer, would be a three million dollar credit, you know? But then that's more disposable income for them in their pocket. They go out, they buy more groceries, they go to more movies, more GRT.
And that's a general fund credit, right? That's a general fund subsidy. So that's what we said earlier before you walked in. The, the net metering, the, the, the federal policy mirrored by the local tax policy was saying, we're willing to subsidize the growth of this newborn. Let's get this newborn going. And, and that's good, right? And, and we're willing to subsidize it on the net metering side. So now that's two ways to help it, right? And I think that, that's what, that's where the industry's been coming from. Help us grow, right? And the only question we're wrestling with now is, should it be capped and in what way? Because there, to me, it's not win-win. It's gotta be win-win-win. There's three legs to the stool. There's those that will benefit from renewable energy directly. Like you said, there are some that will take advantage of this, take advantage of the short timeframe. There's developers that can clearly help these customers. But then there's gonna be everyone else that for whatever, they're, like you, for whatever reason, like me, I'm still trying to convince my wife and my sister that for whatever reason, we don't do it by twenty sixteen, we're gonna rely on GPA for our power. Well, if a thousand customers taking a three million dollars away from GPA, we can absorb that. But what if it, like you said, what if it takes off and it's twenty million? Well, that means the rest of those ratepayers are stuck with the same system to get their energy. But their neighbors have, have left the system and have been given the permission to not be charged for anything at night or anything when the wind stops blowing, right? But those costs remain. The debt service doesn't change. The generators still have to turn on. They're turning on now while solar energy is, is falling back, right?
No, I agree. I think one of the things that we can look at though is...
We're looking for the win-win-win piece. There's a balance.
On that final win part, and that's why, um, the quite, the, the, the statement about, oh, we need to turn it over to the PUC and that the PUC handled that, that element of it too. There's other ways for us to generate the, to offset the loss in revenue from the, um, from the solar generation, um, at a dollar-for-dollar net metering eating away at the, uh, the NEM. And that's, there's the potential for us to make some adjustments to the, um, the property taxes and improvements. I mean, if we can spread the cost out on the property tax side instead and say, hey, you know what? These, um, these grids and these, um, transmission lines, that's for everybody. And so it should be a property tax question and not something that we just tack onto ratepayers. Then all of a sudden, we're spreading it between whoever's generating solar or whoever's generating from the traditional turbines. We're actually saying, generation is generation, transmission is transmission. Let's look at a different, a different way to fund transmission. So I, and, and I think that we'll get there, but I think that's way over here. And we're still just trying to say, are we gonna go with this or not? And I, I think, I think we can, we can go with it. I did have one question though, and that was, um, I, I kinda latched onto something that you were saying, sir, about, um, batteries being too expensive. We just did a bond borrowing authorization for batteries. And the purpose for the batteries was also to help provide the storage capacity for the solar providers.
Not really.
My comment, my comment, and my, my response to that question, Senator, was that on a small scale, it becomes a fixed cost to your, your solar facility that really is difficult to pencil out on the economics.
Yeah, I think if you talk to anybody in GRIA and, and you ask them, what would it cost for you to put a battery on top of your, your solar coal for your house? What would it cost for me to put a battery so I can have twenty-four hour and never have GPA?
But the thing is, we're making the investment now in GPA for the battery system.
Right, but it's not for renewables. Remember.
That was, but that was not...
No, if you remember the discussion, it's, 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 it's to end this, these frequent outages that are going on, this under frequency. And, and remember, it's forty million dollars for a battery that can give you forty megawatts of capacity for thirty minutes. If you're a solar, if you're a renewable customer, you need twenty-four hours of capacity. When the sun goes down, you can't have that battery run out thirty minutes after you start a dinner. And the technology hasn't matured yet. It will, but it, it's just not there yet. To give the renewable energy, that's really the lift they need is storage. And in fact, if storage matures to where we think it would be, we would argue that the best way to do it is let GPA buy the storage for everybody and do all the renewables you can, right? And my belief is a thousand, you know, a hundred years from now, our great-great-great grandchildren will go to the Home Depot today, grab some little device, throw it on their wall and they'll have renewable energy and storage. But that's not where we're at now. It's very expensive. Forty million dollars for forty megawatts of capacity, but you only get thirty minutes of energy. That's the difference between capacity and energy. Capacity is, how did you say it? It's how fast you can drive the car. Uh, is when you punch the car, you can go this fast, but energy is when you're, is, is, when you're sitting idle, right? Your car still has to have that capacity. You have to pay for that car and that engine, but it's just sitting there, right? So...
I think just to comment to the one point where, you know, raising the cap to two fifty is a, is an incentive to beat the twenty sixteen tax exempt. The tax exemption of the credits. I don't have this in my testimony, but I do have it in a, in another report, that we have nine hundred and sixty customers that can benefit just today with a hundred KW limit and we only have thirty-four signed up. And so the incentives has always been there at the hundred KW. Why they haven't, why they choose or choose not to, I can't answer those questions. Uh, taking it to two fifty adds another five hundred customers, four hundred eighty-four, on top of the nine hundred and sixty-five customers that can today enjoy the hundred KW cap. So, so really, where are they? You know, we're, 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 we're saying we're agnostic to the cap on miniature, small-scale level. It's the aggregate total that we wanna plan for, to know for, to make sure we are able to cut costs in time to avoid any rate increases or to pass it on as a fuel expense. Because that, what it really does is energy that avoids fuel. That's all we're saying in this, is that leave it, leave it as an, as an aggregate total, which we estimate maybe twelve thousand KW. Who knows how many customers that may be? And a cost, take the energy and translate that to a cost and say, this is the budgetary limit that we would be guided by year over year over year to manage this better.
Thank you.
And to answer your questions, Senator Hatta? And to answer your questions, Senator Hatta, I think when we looked at our, our preliminary analysis with some of the, the data that was coming in, a lot of the circuits had a lot of room on the top. So we're not, we're not reaching this fifteen, twenty percent amount of NEMs on a circuit based on the total capacity of the circuit. We're far from that. So there's some room and allowance for us to grow into it and allow the industry to grow. It's just that putting a definition around it and not have it open-ended, promoting the industry, we, we don't have a problem with that. I mean, there should be incentives today. And why nine hundred customers are not, not doing it is, is not, is puzzling for us.
The financing.
That's expensive.
And that's why raising it to two fifty...
That's our point.
You have to have tax credits today.
Right. And you're not gonna have them after sixteen, so...
But a, a customer, though, that's able to afford a two hundred and fifty KW system...
There are those.
Is probably gonna be able to cash that. You know, I mean, they're a, a very large user of that kind of utility. They're either able to access that kind of capital in, in, from a bank or lending institution, or they're, or they have that kind of cash reserves. But the also attractive part of that also is they're using that, that much energy as a, as a single-source customer, they're probably a very large employer. You know, and so being able to drop those costs down, maybe they'll be able to hire more individuals, give up more raises, lower prices. If they're a large employer, they probably sell a lot of goods, which means that the community will benefit from the lower cost of doing business, so...
Everything you're saying is...
Those are all things, I, those are different, the different, um...
I think the only thing that will qualify everything you said was, you think about buildings. So even though you're a large employer, you, the power comes, is, is serving a building. So you need to think about it in terms of facilities. And I think that's where we agree with Griya.